Yeah, please.
You guys have definitely been telling the time about my first school.
Hey, you know, it happened.
Well, Kyle, we started. They go rolling.
Full screen. Over. Mark.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Heaton.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Arty.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Erdely.
Here.
And Wes Meredith, we go right.
Me?
Yeah. I know.
Um, action on the minutes. Around when they were considered.
Um, we want to identify that this is regular meeting, that's for.
Oh.
Minutes.
Right, okay, this is a regular meeting. Um, anybody want to, um, work meetings or anybody have any changes? Other than that.
A support group.
Okay, support group.
I'll send it.
Uh, second one. All favor. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, law order. And most carries, uh, probably the agenda, so I have one, uh, thing that would make the agenda is table item C. Under new business, um, that's definitely with E V. Like, uh, talk about that connection here. Uh, who's any support or anybody else have any comments? If there's sense.
Yep.
There's even a move on that motion. It was just a move, I moved it because, um, table I have to see.
Move that to post business for January.
Yeah, yeah, right. Thanks for.
Oh, yeah, I'll send it back.
Okay, last one, sorry. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Both. Most carries.
A little bit of a second. Okay.
Uh, public hearing. Or any public hearing. Um, hearing participation. Nine. Work of the officers, item six. Turn the report, I have nothing to report. How we do anything else? Thank you, um. You Phil?
No, me. Oh, I'm sorry, it's okay. Yeah, just a couple of things tonight.
For our official.
Uh, first of all, just a quick update on some things from the fire station facilities committee meetings and we're already looking at that tonight. Um, so a lot of, um, focus obviously has been put on the budget, it's, you know, it's a, it's a tight budget, it's a tight timeline, so we're considering, you know, they are considering all different types of options to, um, to try to budget check. And a couple of the things that they've talked about are cutting the officer phase from five to six and having two base below. Um, the thought being that that would give more flexibility with the space as, you know, as proposed. And the fact that it's a decision that will need to be made now or never, basically. Um, and it's something that the D A F D is, um, prioritizing is having that number of base in any configuration is my, my understanding. Um, but that sort of puts on the table due to, um, budget stuff. And also moving the sheriff out of the fire department complex and into a different location, which is something that the Washington County Sheriff's Department is in support of. They, um, are partially, I mean, in part due to the fact that if they are elsewhere, there are more and better options for parking and ease of, um, leaving, coming and going from whatever spaces they're in, so it's not as cramped as they would be at the, um, space with the fire, uh, fire station. Um, and that shift would also allow us to optimize the upstairs of the building. It frees up about, I, my understanding is it frees up about two thirds of the square footage of the upstairs by moving the sheriff, which would enable us to optimize the, um, the fire station, the fire department operations. Um, and it also frees up, you know, budget dollars to look at some other options we consider, which are including the two base in the back. Um, the couple of restrooms for the park and also the elevator for access from Alpine Street down to the park for the public. And, uh, the bottom line is that as we look at what we're gonna look at tonight, um, I just want to throw out there that we as, the, the people on that committee and we as council, I, I, well, me on council, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of them, that we're really trying to be as cognizant as we can of the money that we're using. I mean, costs are always escalating, we know that, we've known that. And so as we look at things like facade, it's not that I don't want the building to look beautiful, it's just we're sort of in a position now where we need to look at functionality and form in, uh, in my opinion, and so I know we need to adhere to the zoning laws and I don't want something ugly looking at us, but if we can, I mean, we're looking at it in all areas of the build, so I'm just encouraging us to also think of it as we're thinking as we have the discussion tonight. Um, and the other thing is we're on a tight timeline, as I said before, so this is the time that we need to get feedback from you. Um, and we want, obviously want feedback from you. Uh, second thing is the hotel basement property. So we as council have asked staff for some, uh, further information about that property before we have further discussion about what we might want to do with it. Um, we've asked them to give us a valuation of that property and also to do a title search to see, uh, if there are any things like easements, deed restrictions or anything else like that that may make a redevelopment or a sale of that property more difficult. And that's another thing, right now, if you guys have any feedback, uh, we, I will hear it and report it back to council about what you think that property would be best or could be best used for, for the city. Um, and then the third thing, and then any questions?
Is that just the, sort of, the small buildings? You'll have those. And, oh, no, residential units.
That's separate, right, Michelle?
Uh-huh.
The jewelers for a part of separate, it's just the free standing building, they used to be the sheriff's apartment. Um, anyway, you know, the last thing is the, um, annexation with the stolen gangly property. Um, Dave Blotten came and talked to us at the last meeting during that range participation. And so because it was an item on our agenda that ultimately I, the council member Michelle's and I seconded to postpone the item because I've gotten in the habit of at least supporting postponement of anything that feels important that we are being asked to discuss after ten thirty P M. Because I would, if there's not a set timeline on it, I would rather have us discuss it in a meeting where we're not burnt out at ten thirty or ten forty-five. Um, so we postponed that and we'll be kicking that up in a later meeting.
Awesome. Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you. And of course, are we going to be discussing the fire station again? Then on the agenda now?
It's now that you put the menu again down, that's a good thing, we should have put it down.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we can bring any agenda to, uh, to the discussion. We can go put it back where C is. And, uh, you, uh.
Um, so I'm, I'm advised to remain with the, I mean, what's played us. Um, three nine C. Postponed, uh, too much currently here and we, instead of respecting the company fire station. I'll send it back.
We need to vote on that or?
It's a voice call.
Uh, all picture. Bye, bye. Both. Yeah, carries. Awesome. Now it's time.
Okay, uh, you've got my report in front of you. Um, uh, the update, uh, the only real uh, major update, if you will, was in the supplement. And that is the common sale has informed us that they are not, we pursue a purchase agreement and they aren't, can't see a project working on the site. So we will, we'll, we'll call it D D A and I suspect we will look for a redevelopment. But we probably won't come back and do another predevelopment, I think that it'll, it'll be more, uh, that proves that, I think. We've learned enough to use three times. Uh, but I think everybody's comfortable with that.
I, I would just add, uh, architecturally, we're seeing, um, residential really drop off right now. Maybe, uh, council may consider just holding, rolling it out because it may be a, a case where, uh, we're wanting to sell residential parcel at the bottom of the risk of, that our essential bottoming out. And it will be very difficult to get much value, which we might be kind of sacrificing a lot for kind of getting off the books, and that's all it is.
Oh, that is D D A, that, yeah.
So D D A, I'm sorry.
Which was a huge difference, it's a huge difference because we as council can't vote sell anything.
I see, so, right, right.
Right, but I will take your comment, that's that could be, that we need to use.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Michelle, anybody else? Okay, uh, citizens wishing to address the planning commission, now range participation. No? No hands?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, whole item seven, uh, old business, none. Two. Sorry, I'm sorry, uh. Yeah. And, uh, new business, um. Shell, one.
Yeah.
A call.
Okay, so this is, um, Kentwood Place conceptual plan unit development. This is, this is a discussion tonight, no action, uh, by planning commission, but, um, it provides the applicant an opportunity to explain or present to you their concept for the project. Um, uh, and make their best case for it and, uh, get allows you to provide feedback without being, um, um, legally bound by any time. Um, so with that, I will introduce you to Candace Thorey with Midwestern Consulting. She's representing, uh, Kent Brown and Pam Burns Brown, the owners of the property. And, um, Candace will introduce anyone else from the team, but I'll let them start and present their projects. And some of these, I hope they follow.
Thank you, everybody. Um, so as Michelle said, Candace, part of Midwestern Consulting. I'm here tonight with Amber, it's Brown, and Brown, the owners, as well as Brandon, with the architect, and Jim Heisler with Norfolk Homes, who's acting as a consultant on this project. Um, so Kentwood Place, we have had, um, a couple of pre-application meetings with the city and the S H L said we're here tonight for discussion of our conceptual beauty site. Uh, and then we're hoping to use any feedback you get from you all and from city council to, um, revise our plans as needed and then prepare preliminary site plans for the project. So before I get started, um, I would like to invite Pam and Ken, uh, because they have a few things they'd like to share regarding their goals for the project and kind of the genesis of the whole thing, and then I'll get into the, maybe, really.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We wanted to take just a couple of minutes, if we could, to introduce ourselves. Uh, some of you know us, but, uh, we wanted to give you an idea of who we are and why we kind of got into this project. Uh, we are residents of Washington County, and we're nearly thirty years now. Uh, where we have acquired property here and for rental and have had, uh, a small number of, of rental properties. We, uh, have been a property owner in Dexter for over twenty-five years. And have been involved in the community. We, uh, uh, are not developers per se, uh, we have been landlords for over forty years, but, uh, this is a little diversion for us, a different way to approach, but we, uh, we consider ourselves small business people, we have our own organizations over the years. We have, uh, uh, run and we, uh, really support local business, it's a big important item for us. Um, we're also, uh, we have a small farm and we're, uh, I, I'm proud to be a farmer. We, uh, produce a variety of different products and we sell some of those products at, at our farm stop shop. Pam will be for herself, but she has been in public service, so, uh, you're more likely to be a developer than you are me. Uh, in fact, I've been knowing you better as Mr. Pam Burns than I have Kent Brown, but Pam, uh, was the first woman role commissioner in Long Island County. She, uh, uh, then went to the State House of Representatives, paid service for years there. A part of which was in leadership and, uh, has accomplished a number of things. Um, I just wanted to say that our interest in this project, we saw an opportunity to create a community within the community, um, you, using these parcels that have been vacant, certainly all the time that we've owned, probably, in Dexter. Uh, we, uh, we wanted the, uh, the project to blend in with the community architecturally and, uh, we wanted it to, uh, really reflect the community. We, uh, wanted to promote downtown, uh, sure Pam will mention walkability, but that's, that's been a priority and an interest of ours for long times. Promoting walkability and especially supporting small movement.
Well, um, we are really, really excited about this project and, um, it's a little bit by way history for me, I got my start, uh, in public service by, you know, the planning commission in the city of Celine. And that went back in the early eighties and, uh, uh, made a lot of contacts with people and, in fact, out of them, it's, uh, Jim Heisler worked at that time, Gordon Peters Building Company when, uh, I was on the planning commission. Uh, anyway, uh, while I was in the legislature, I was, uh, happy to be the sponsor of the, uh, Complete Streets legislation that I'm sure you're probably familiar with, as well as the College Food Bill, which has been a big boost to our farmers market. And, um, we are extremely excited about this project. It's just kind of happened, you know, we bought this little parcel on Baker and, uh, we're talking with Michelle, she was talking about, you know, it'd be nice to have a, a walkway or an easement across the back. And it turned out that we were able to purchase that property on Forest and it just seemed to be, um, the right thing to happen here. Um, I'm definitely all about walkability, mobility, uh, supporting local businesses downtown. And, um, I think this project is, um, a really good, um, should I say, uh, evolution of this property. And also the ability, what our plan is, is to put a walkway through from the parking lot all the way to Baker Road. So people can walk right across there to get the post office, a shortcut through to, uh, Baker Road. And so, uh, I think this is, um, going to be an exciting project and that we're moving more people into the downtown area who can enjoy the downtown area and go to the shops there and eat downtown. So, um, we're, we welcome comments, so we can move this project forward and look for your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so just for context, um, the site is kind of northwest of the Baker and Forest intersection. Um, there's assorted single-family residential office, commercial uses, kind of the north and south of it. Um, as Pam mentioned, the post office is directly across the street, um, to the east of the site on Baker. There's an apartment building just south of the site and then the city's kind of public parking lot is immediately adjacent to the northwest property line. We're one block away from Mill Creek Park, less than a block to Moneywood Park, so the site's definitely a part of the downtown fabric. Um, so the existing zoning of the site is C V D, central business district. Um, all of the properties around us are also a zone of C V D. Um, the future land use designation is downtown was is the same for all the parcels around ours. Um, the site also located within the D D A boundary. And, um, if you look at the strategic plan for the, um, for D D A, although it's a little bit old, it does strongly recommend the addition of residential uses within downtown. And those are envisioned as two and a half to three-story townhomes, which is what we're. So, um, as I'm sure you're aware, the C V D is a form based on, based on site types of street type. So the Baker Road parcel is identified as site type A on the corner of Street. And the Forest Street parcel is identified as a site type E on downtown B Street. So unfortunately, because the site on Baker is vacant, there is not any building form that's permitted by rights. Everything is a special use. So that makes it a little tricky. Um, townhouse and attached residential buildings are permitted with special approval. On the Forest parcel, uh, we have a little bit more flexibility, nearly all of the, the residential mixed-use building types are permitted by right on the, on the Forest parcel. And then single-use curvy buildings are permitted with special approval. As far as existing conditions go, um, the site is comprised of two parcels, the parcel on Baker and the parcel on Forest. Um, the parcels are relatively small, um, with the two of them combined being just over three quarters of the acre. And Kent mentioned the Baker Road parcel is currently vacant, has been for time. The Forest Street parcel includes an existing single-family house and a couple of garages and outbuildings, which, um, they're currently using as a rental property. Um, each of the parcels also has an exit driveway curb cut. Uh, one onto Baker and one onto Forest. And then our plan right now is to remove all existing structures as part of the proposed development. So here is our conceptual site layout. We are proposing fifteen, um, townhouse-style residential units within four buildings. We're proposing sidewalk connections throughout the site to promote pedestrian access downtown. Approximately eighteen percent of the site is being provided as open space. Vehicle access will be provided from those two existing curbs, though the one on Baker will be designed to accommodate one-way traffic. And the curb cut on Forest will be modified to accommodate two-way traffic. We do have thirty-six proposed parking spaces on site. Thirty of those are in the garages and six of them are driveway spaces. Because of the depth of some of the driveways, they're not all long enough to support having a car parked in the driveway, so um, only six of them, the way it's configured currently, a little out for driveway parking. Um, there's also nine on-street parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to our property frontages. There's two on Baker and seven on Forest. And then we're proposing four bicycle spaces, so two hooves, um, with additional bike parking in the garages. And then obviously there's an opportunity to add more bike hoops if we need to on either Baker or Forest. And then we're showing a solid waste enclosure on-site for trash recycling carts for dumpsters. And then obviously the, the garbage truck or recycling truck can come in and empty the dumpsters and pull out. So this being a P U D, um, we there are a whole host of criteria and ordinance for what we can comply with in order to be a P U D, what benefits we're providing. So we did provide kind of a separate memo that goes through each of those items, one by one, if you've had a chance to look through that. I can, I had planned on going through all of those individually, but I'm happy to, if you would like to, um, I'm just gonna hit on kind of the five key recognizable benefits and kind of the site design features that we're providing as part of this. Um, so it is obviously a, a pedestrian and transit oriented design. The buildings are located right at the road, right of way, and they're oriented toward the streets. We're proposing lots of new sidewalks to connect pedestrians and bicyclists from Baker to the the city-owned parking lot and to the other commercial areas. We're also providing buildings that include a lot of quality building materials and interesting design elements from throughout the architectural fabric of the city. Um, Brandon takes some design inspiration from nearby structures to kind of unite the proposed developments and the broader neighborhood character. Um, this, we think is an efficient consolidation of some kind of awkward-shaped parcels. Um, separately, the two parcels are generally too small for any kind of functional redevelopment. Um, consolidating it too allows for more integrity and more cohesive design. The proposed townhouse units will provide effective transition between the existing downtown businesses and office uses, as well as the home and family residential and singly, single-family residential uses that are all immediately adjacent to the site. And it provides shared vehicle access from Baker and Forest. Um, not reflected in our concept plans, because obviously we didn't want to develop these too much and we haven't made a lot of changes. But, um, we are also planning to do some enhanced plans, even on the site, so we would meet the limits requirements and then kind of go a little beyond to make, make the site look nice. Um, and we, we've looked at some other projects that, um, have happened relatively recently in the city and what they were proposing as their public benefits. Um, many of which included kind of monetary contributions towards public parking spaces and trees and landscaping in parks, things like that. So, um, we're willing to consider those options as well. Um, but we're really asking for input from the planning commission on what kind of tangible benefits you think would be appropriate for a project in this scope, kind of this part of your, your feedback thing. As far as the utility go, um, so we discussed this with staff at the pre-application meeting. Um, what we're currently proposing is one new water service lead for each building. Um, and two of those leads would connect to the existing eight-inch main in Baker and two would connect to the existing twelve-inch main in Forest. And then there would be one new hydrant proposed, it's kind of difficult to see here, but it's like right toward the, near the center of this thing. And then similar to the water, sanitary sewer leads would also be provided one for each lead. Two leads would connect to the fifteen-inch Baker and two would connect to the inch in Forest. We did do infiltration testing on the site back in October and got very good infiltration rates during testing, so, um, stormwater management is proposed to handle via an underground infiltration basin beneath the driveways. And then you would provide an emergency overflow outlet to the existing twenty-four-inch storm sewer of this. I will invite Brad to come up and talk a little bit on that.
Pete, um, we've designed some units here, uh, that are what I would call a bicycle tower. Uh, in their orientation and design with, uh, with the twist that we try to keep the first floor plan as open as possible. This is a, a basement that we've, uh, accomplished several conversions. If you, it will be very, since that appeared. Uh, the organization of the interiors, basically, is that the garage is in the lowest level. And at that same level is your utility functions, uh, longways, uh, et cetera. The front porch is on a half level up, so you ascend from the street level, half level to the, to the front porch. And then enter into the, uh, building, the chapel between the garage wall and the middle hallway. The ability to see through the entire unit front to back, really makes it feel, it's exceptionally spacious. Uh, and, uh, some of the units will be end units and have a study market kitchen, because it would be a good opportunity to, 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 and, uh, side out a couple of the, second floor would accommodate, uh, two bedrooms. The first floor, uh, can be rearranged at a, a court style and based on the needs of the organ, could be a hall office, it could be a den, it could be a study, it could be a dining room. And then, I mean, uppermost level, uh, we chose a gable framework. And that is another flex space, it could be configured as a, kind of, living space or another office compartment. We think, yeah, so. We think, yeah, so give the buyer a tremendous amount of flexibility in how they use this so it can feel a little greater percentage of the marketplace is looking for a townhome. We're trying to use a vocabulary that speaks to the architecture already in the community with gable floors, sparsely, dormers, bay windows, foundations, clavels, stone, which we find our common design almost throughout the community. Again, help the new structures fit into a context where they will be helpful in construction. These are some different views. You'll notice that above the garage entry side, we've allocated some outdoor living space. So everybody has an outdoor patio to enjoy those wonderful times of year when it's not cloudy or rainy or snowy, that there are some nice activities. Again, site elevations are a big difference both gable four and roof structure and dormers, the garage, the foundation in the roof.
So we have received some review comments from the city. We got letters from Ouchan, from the fire department, from Carlisle Warman. And then, we got some staff review comments earlier today from Michelle as well. We do need some clarification on some of those, how the codes are being applied. But we're happy to work with staff and I think we can resolve any outstanding questions or issues that we have with any of those, those letters. And we're glad, we're happy to answer any questions. We'd love any feedback if we have, and thanks.
Maybe we'll go through the survey, and then we'll still won't say the name of the Ouchan. And then, I believe, Edwidge is for the fire department or the other department there. And he'll be able to go through the fire department, if you're concerned.
Thank you. Good evening. Megan Nussman, Minak with Carlisle Warman. This thing is in a bit of a zoning conundrum. Because literally, thirty-one sixty-five Baker is the only vacant parcel that has that zoning context in the Form Based Code. And on a border road, a first-floor residential use isn't allowed. That's the main reason for the PUD in looking at it. But also, as you go through, you'll see that there are a number of deviations that are being asked for from the bulk regulations. And if you add them all up as individuals, there's none. Three of those have to deal with the first floor in three, in three buildings, the minimum ground floor height. And so, that's in every building and it's required to be twelve feet and they have nine and a half feet, which is a standard height for a residential building. The reason for asking for the twelve feet in the Form Based Code, particularly in the central business district, is to guarantee that you can have a turnover of uses in those downtown buildings. However, if you're building townhouses, it's likely not going to be there. So that's one of the things to think about. However, in thinking about those deviations that they're requesting, and if you look at the context of the other residential parcels that are nearby, they are asking for yard deviations as well. And that is something really to look at the context and to say whether the number of units proposed and the amount of green space proposed in a PUD of this nature is what the applicant is proposing in that. Number one, fits the vision of the master plan, meets its goal. And second of all, and second of all, keeps the context of what makes the downtown of Dexter great. In our report, we pointed out a number of goals in the master plan that relate to this, including for the central business district, walkability, mobility, and the downtown district. One of the things I want to stress is that downtown district is a mixed-use district that doesn't require that every building within the CBD, especially a PUD, has to be mixed-use. It's just that there's a mixture of uses and there's the appropriate amount of uses in the appropriate places in the downtown. So while an instinct might be to say it's not a mixed-use building, it doesn't fit, to look at these parcels as a proportion inside and think about how, and also where they're located, which is fairly on the edge of that downtown district. And to think how, what's being proposed would contribute. In terms of the parking, we just wanted to point out two things where deviations are being asked for. Number one, the maximum, there have thirty-six spaces. And again, with residential use and the garages and whatnot, that thirty-six is well above the maximum. But that may be the appropriate amount. So we'll get that. And also, that technically, the ordinance requires two bike hoops on Baker Road and two on Forest. Currently, only two are proposed to applicant, indicating tonight that they would be happy to have others. But that's something where you should give them input. In terms of landscaping, we really feel that the landscaping for this thing could be a place where it could excel and set the tone on Baker and on Forest. I remember during the master plan, walking along Baker with some of you here tonight. And what we said, there's not a lot of character here. We wanted to establish character. And I think this could be a great place to set that tone, where they're looking for the excellence in some, they've done excellent architecture and design. I think the landscaping, the sidewalks and whatnot can all come along with that and then set a tone. I wanted to speak really quickly about the PUD qualification. Just note a couple of them to you. So in terms of that recognizable benefit, we cited the pedestrian transit-oriented design, efficient consolidation of the formerly diventous parcels and shared vehicular access between the properties and uses. Another standard is to encourage innovation and land use in design, architecture, layout and type of structures. We feel like that can be met and the planning commission should provide the applicant any other insight into how they would be able to meet those. The third standard is the PUD shall incorporate design elements that even by the site through landscaping, lighting, fourth-inning signage, pedestrian moving pathways. Again, the label can be in there, but it's not distinctive. And also, that sidewalks, the lighting, they all really have a chance to tie it together and then tie it to Forest and Baker and what's going on there. In terms of long-term protection of natural resources, that would be a significant part of it. That qualification can be met. It's mostly a built site, but there are a number of trees on the site. We're unclear as to what was being saved and what was not. It seemed like most of them would go. But if that is something that folks feel that is an asset and some of the trees should be protected, I would strongly encourage you to care about that tonight. In terms of long-term protective of historic structures or significant architecture worthy of preservation, which is a standard for the PUD, there's an existing house at eighty-two Forest Street that's proposed to be demolished. According to city records, this house was built eighteen forty-seven. If you look at the architecture of it, the returns of the eaves and those who are architects are going to be able to tell me what that, share with you what that is and the importance of that. But that indicates an older structure and part of architecture that's out of the village area. If you look at it, it looks like there was an original house and then there was a screened porch that was attached to it. Whether, you know, the applicant needs to hear from you and perhaps consider whether retaining this portion of the house or retaining some architecture or parking of it is worthwhile. Barring that, in some ways, the planning commission would need to find that the house is not of historic or significant architecture worthy of preservation in order to meet that standard. And there may be some things about the house that is not structurally sound or there are things that it's just not, it's not worth saving at that point. Another standard is to achieve economy and efficiency and use the land, natural resources and energy for the provision of public service, utilities and provide adequate housing, employment and shopping opportunities. This undoubtedly would provide more housing of a different type in the downtown. And it's connected into the pedestrian network and will help it. We have some comments about public health, safety and welfare. We really defer to the fire department on that. And in terms of a reasonable negative impact, we've talked about that historic structure potentially at eighty-two Forest. And finally, whether the, another standard is opposed, PUD would not result in unreasonable negative economic impact, it would probably represent a positive impact in the downtown by bringing those fifteen households to contribute to the economy of the small businesses and the other businesses in the downtown. The proposed use should be of location size, density and character as to be a harmony with the zoning district. You should provide guidance on that, especially in regard to the density. And then, finally, want to talk a little bit more about item L in my letter on page nineteen, which is the standard that the PUD is not proposed as an attempt by petitioner to circumvent strict application of zoning standards. As I said, this is implicitly in some ways using the PUD to get a use variance. Because that use is not allowed, first-floor residential use is not allowed at that place. Another option that the planning commission could look at is to do exactly what you did with the other houses that were on downtown B Streets or on residential streets at the end of the zoning ordinance process was to say, let's allow first-floor residential uses in these areas. There was some push, there, there's some pros and cons to that. And if you would like to talk more about that and hear those, we can talk about those. Essentially, this is the only relief valve for the applicant wanting to buy surely, to build a surely residential product on that Baker Road. That said, they're asking for yard deviations that you need to decide and we felt we're not proportional to the benefits that were proposed. When you're asking for nine deviations, that's a lot. Even if you knock out the three, you're asking for five to six. It's still a lot in terms of you look at the yards and whatnot. And so, you really should take that into consideration and give the applicants the guidance. We have a listing of the leaders and the staff also has one in there for it. So take those into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, May. I'm filling in for Marcus tonight. My name is Stacey from Ouchan. We also provided a number of comments in our review from November twenty-eighth that we would like to see addressed, although we had three main ones. One of them being the water main being moved from Baker to Forest Street instead of the individual services that they're proposing. That was also a request by the Public Works and Fire Department. We'd like to see the drive approach on Baker Road adjusted so that it doesn't encroach the neighboring parcel. There's a portion of their entrance that kind of, it goes just a smidge past the property line. So we'd like to see that revised. And then, also modifying the internal site drive lanes to accommodate fire department standards as they're currently a bit too narrow. So we would also refer to the fire department on that, making sure that they have enough room for accessibility. The other comments in our letter were pretty much regarding site utilities and stormwater management as well as site layout. I think that they're all relatively straightforward and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. Yeah, so with the, some of the things already been talked about, the access road comes out to Baker. They're proposing only eleven foot. We would want that to be twenty-six foot for access for aerial use, especially since the height of the buildings. The weight handling of the underground store, I believe, the stormwater system. Need some input on that or information on that due to some of our trucks can be upwards of seventy-five thousand pounds. Making sure they can handle Knox box address signs, pretty much common stuff. Turning radiuses, we're, based on the print, it looked like it was, some of them were pretty tight. Fire suppression and detection, egress on the property lines. Since the garage is actually technically the back of the building and the front of the building is facing the property lines. Making sure we have enough access there, because we do have limited access. The, really, there's only one building that we can technically get two sides of the building from the parking lot. Parking, you guys have talked about snow removal. Like, since there's very little parking lot to begin with, where would the snow be pushed to just for our access? I think that was about it. I think, I don't know if the fire chief is on or not, like, if he has any additional.
And if you qualify in which, which access are you talking about that you need to go from eleven to twenty-six feet? Can you say that again? I missed the one I did.
Though, well, it's the drive that they have it proposed as eleven foot wide. The one down, out to Baker. That's pretty narrow.
All right, so if there's a fire, I guess, in, when the, the, the structure is a few feet from the street, you're not going to pull a fire truck up in front of somebody to aim it, are you? Does that replace you in the fall zone?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the rule of thumb for fighting a fire is the height of the building, we need to be one and a half times that distance out. And in lieu of the heights of these buildings, it would be virtually impossible to put a fire truck far enough or ladder truck out far enough away from it to keep that in, out of the collapse zone, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'll do my best to get through here without repeating what others have said. So staff's letter inadvertently missed getting put into the packet. You got it in your supplement. The things that are important for you to provide feedback to the applicant on are those things that would allow them to demonstrate or it demonstrates probably the best word, that it's a PUD qualified project or it's a project that would qualify. So that's what staff's letter has focused on for you, identifying the different portions of the, of their proposal, where they may be able to meet the different criteria, but where planning commission's feedback is really going to be necessary. So if you would like to literally use that to go down the list, to get the feedback on the different even qualifications, starting with recognizable material benefits, I think you've got at least a good outline to work with.
What page is that, Mr.?
It's in the supplement. It starts on the second page of the supplement. And the specific qualifications start on page two of the staff report. The word says discussion. The word says discussion.
Thank you very much. The uh. Recognizing recognizable material benefits, I think Megan went from some goals, so finally, do you have any uh? What comments from the panel? Using these as a reference or anything you want to talk about?
Sure. I I'm torn because. I think that there's a lot to doing here that is in line with our master plan and what the kind of development we're looking for. But I absolutely feel using the P U D to get around zoning requirements, and that's exactly what the P U D is not supposed to be. And I'm really opposed to residential on Baker. I mean, we have those requirements for a reason. The mix of commercial and residential in any downtown is what treats a downtown vibrant. I've been on board for ten years and I don't think we will have any residential in a similar setting. The fire challenges um. Would be very difficult with this command, and we don't have a lot of flexibility on that. If the fire department gives you a thumbs down on it. It's a thumbs down. That's that. I really like that you're getting fifteen units onto this this new combined properties. We want downtown density. We want people in the downtown. I really like that. I really like the townhouse forms that you're using. Um, I think that they're. You know, really aesthetically pleasing from an outside view and really well designed for plan wise. You know, so much you can do with a with a townhouse, but I think that they're very good looking townhouses with a good pyramid. I wonder whether you can take something similar to this plan if you were to acquire a apartment. Put a commercial building on Baker and still do the rest of it as residential. I think that that would receive a much more um. Positive perception from me. Some of the things that were talked about, I don't think they carry a lot right here. There's a discussion about eighteen percent open space. It's not open space. Well, it's a, it's a dense urban development and that's fine. Like, we like that downtown, but you know, that's fine. Were many of these planning commissioners are in favor of dense downtown development, I believe myself. Um, the innovative pedestrian design, it's not, you're not doing enough there. It's a link places. That desperately need linking for that to be a significant benefit. You know. As as our briefing points out, like under the new zoning, you have to be baked in the street and things like that. It's not huge in that. I I, as I say always, I sound somewhat negative, but I want you to know, we're just coming off another project, how where the developer came in. Um, we gave him a lot of feedback. They went back and changed that project in a variety of ways, and we were unanimous in passing it eventually. And so I I want to make it clear, I don't mean to be discouraging or do it all. I really like certain aspects of this project a lot. Um, I like certain parts of the layout. Um, I like that you're trying to creatively use two um parcels that, you know. Separately, I think could be developed in a very boring way. It's not a very boring way. I question whether you might be able to do this plan or something very similar to this plan without the P U D, without connecting lots. I think there's a possibility certainly on the non-Baker parcel that you could do something very similar to what you already. Got planned here. I I recognize your challenge is bigger. Those were my thoughts generally.
Thank you. And Bill? I I think what we'll do is we'll go around the table and then get get the general comments, and then we'll come back to the list and and get like a final. Bill?
Karen? I'd like to sort of chime in with Jen on. I I do think this is an urban development. And so I somebody who brings back even somebody who lands in the stuff at that. Well, you know, you look down, you know, our mainstream, and if you look at a lot of urban. Uh, developments where there are, you know, residential sort of townhouses. Or something, or apartment buildings, the landscapes and the east map are not necessarily in the property. And I I I almost thought that other than softening. This is not a place to put a car, I just, I don't think there's anything that I don't think it's going to have that kind of use. I'm not sure I totally, I. I. I feel like you're 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 putting in too many units for the size of these. Maybe three buildings. I don't know. I I I was glad to hear Megan say that next year doesn't have to be. Within every building. Uh, though I will say this, and this is on the one hand and the other, that's a slippery slope. You know, they're committed in here. You know, along the, under the, you know, who else wants to play a little bit of? But I'd sort of like to cut through, I mean, I I think a shortcut, I mean, the post office is just operating in that player. That it's not quite easy. And this would make it as well. And um, let's see, I did have some, I I was curious about with a sort of demographic for who we picture in this. And um, I was concerned about, you know, that it's not really, certainly on the strategy. But circulation, it did look like there's an awful lot of driveway that was narrow and not much. And I agree, it's not puzzled by that thought, this doesn't sign, it'll decide. Where you can go one way and into it. And you can only get out of it another way. You know, and you could go two ways, not coming across that forest, you're only one way coming from Baker and go, hmm. I, it doesn't, I I can't articulate it more than to, that's what it sounds like. It was planned. Um, but um, in any rate, I just, I I did think. That as a planning commission, we really need to discuss and set back this, we only commit. Part of the, the part of it is really straight up against that whole industry. But that's that's an urban framework, so you're not sure how much I can dedicate it for. But I mean, overall, I mean, I'm applying for a modification of this that. It's, you know, term of the year, I feel like, I think it looks good and. It looks to me like the new development on the corner of Liberty and um Miller or now Angel. But I've always thought that lighting's good, and this reminds me of that, you know, that that's a good looking for the design. And um, and so I'm I'm not sprung on, I I also have a. I know this is this a transient thing, market moves all over the place, but right now. When market goes to commercial slash retail is not great. And to sort of insist that. That every building contain that. If it's going to be an empty storefront, then that's not what we want. And so I thought this was 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 pretty good. You know, it it wasn't too dense in terms of the number of units. It just seemed to me because of the funniness of the the lot, that four joints was maybe.
Thank you, Karen. Bill?
Jeff? When I looked at this, I thought, uh, my first thought was. What happens if you lost it? What happens if you lost it? Always lovely things boost up. I think it's too packed. Whole building and therefore all of the setbacks and the rope, the drive woods and everything have been compromised. So that, my initial thought is, yeah, I'm with others. The building design is fine. It seems like, and the density is fine if you're to figure out a way to do it. Um, with that ability, but I don't know how you would if it's the same building. Um, it it just seems like you don't have room for the stuff that you need to do. I would be in favor of doing it. I'm not with Karen on the walkthrough. I don't think anybody would use it. You might, but the um, you know, it would look like a private walkway on a private uh subdivision and therefore. You feel like it's not a public, you know, it's right there, it's right between all the buildings, and you don't feel as comfortable to walk through it. It's a good thing. But I don't think it'd be used in that fashion, I felt. I think you should squeeze green in where you can squeeze green in. And that doesn't mean that it becomes a high priority. Um, there are places where you can accentuate entrances and things like that. That's a good thing. And I'm sure your landscape architect will get into that at some point in time. I'm disappointed that on your plan, you do show all of the existing vegetation. Particularly that large tree, I mean, then you've stopped to figure out what it was right there on Forest. I mean, that adds a lot to your property, but I'm suspecting that that's wrong. Uh, you you don't show it as an acrostic tree, you don't show it as a tree, and there are other ones there. The uh. There's a couple of other things, but really, those are my top of my head kind of things that, um, break me.
Thank you, Jeff. Who else?
Sure. Like other commissioners have mentioned, it does seem like there's ten thousand or five thousand back there. Um. I don't mind the density. I don't mind the residential use. I tend to agree with Karen. I don't like empty storefronts. So adding storefronts is going to be, yeah, it's it's not awesome. Uh, I'm a little concerned about, I'm a little concerned about the height. I I feel like it's going to dwarf the neighboring buildings, which I know are older and may be some point. Uh, redeveloped, but it just seemed really high and I couldn't tell from the elevations what it looked like to the neighboring properties. Uh, I feel like there's some utility challenges here. Um, they showed a water main right up next to an underground storage extension. And of course, if the fire department wants, or I don't know if it's fire department or if it was um. Well, if you have that wanted that water main to loop, well, that negates putting underground storage in the location that was shown. And I wasn't quite sure which way the one-way system was supposed to work from Baker. Is it one way out to Baker or one way into the site? And if it's one way into the site, I don't know. I deal with traction on my current world and I'm looking at that going, oh, huh, it's going to be serviced. So, and also know that that dumpster place right next to residential development is going to generate complaints if it serves really. Not that anybody can do anything about that necessarily, but it is something that um. You can figure out how to put it in a place that is going to impact as few as people as possible is good.
That doesn't take the regard of the department, sure. Looking up here, someone mentioned the fire or the engineer that that last. Well, I, the vehicles in there are going to have difficulty with that dumpster location getting out of there.
Well, that's another thing. I wasn't quite sure where the parking's parking that was going to be in the driveway space where those, which driveways those were. Because you can't put a car in the in the one space. It's going to impact people trying to maneuver. If that's one of the spaces that was for a driveway or a car driveway.
Thank you.
And then your turn. Yeah, sure. So just full disclosure, I worked with them um, Hammett earlier time. On concept, outside concept stuff. I'm familiar with it and I mean, in fact, not be able to vote when it comes up. We'll have to talk.
Did you work on this project?
Definitely, yeah.
And you're living way, you've worked on it on the previous iterations, you've thought how to fix this.
So this, I'm, it's not fresh, but I I wasn't involved early, so I know a little bit about some of the difficulties and um. I, I think, like, I like this plan, but it reminds me of, it's got a lot of new stuff that needs kind of talked about. Um, and in a good way. I mean, I think, uh, you know, okay, so I guess to give you a frame of reference, this site is a. It's a downtown parcel, so theoretically, they can build up to property line. And up forty-five feet and not put one single parking lot in it. And that that would be uh considered, wow, so. So what do you think about what's might add to the problem with that? I'm, maybe not, yeah, I mean, who knows, right? But it's, I'm saying, I'm like, okay, so that's like the zoning. And then also this form isn't really fitting in to the zoning. We can see that you brought up, it's kind of like a wall. It's a strange spot. There's really nothing allowed technically by the zoning, but everything is a special kind of approval on this, so. That adds another, another layer to it. So the. The idea of mending the zoning to kind of fix this whole ethic is. It may be something that we should be talking about. Anyway, so to get back to this, so. I don't know. I I mean, we're using the 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 form is good because you're using the the route to get some more space in there. You know, the buildings, they do seem like they fit with town, which I really don't have any place about the architecture and and all that. Uh, one thing which was was brought up was about this. Need a twenty-six foot wide access from fire department and. I I don't know enough about how that process works, but does planning override that? Can we?
Um, there's, there's language in our general code about the area that provides. Fire access. Um, one of the things that I've communicated to the applicant about and. Strongly encourage, one is they really need to work with the fire chief, like the applicant for the column did. Um, because he is very easy to work with. Um, he's not going to subvert the requirements for code, but he is easy to work with. I think the other thing that that drives some of the concerns that they have or the D A P has is they don't know if these buildings are going to be fire suppressed. If they're fire suppressed, the pressure for. Certain widths of the lanes, notwithstanding the point that Tom had made, which. Uh, right there with, um, it really does reduce a lot of that of need for, um, so it it. I think there's some things that they can work out, but that's going to need to be directly working with the fire chief.
Um, let's see. One brought up a question about where the. Sidewalk is on the parking lot side. It almost looks like it is off the park. From which you want to move, there's a wall that runs here or out to the. The parking lot side.
If I keep or if you look on sheet four, you put that. The sidewalk there is. Oh, on the horse side it goes back, and then it looks like it goes into the parking lot. That was something that I raised in the letter that like it was proposing some sort of offsite improvement or. What, and can you guys explain that?
What it is that you're proposing now, so that we have a fair understanding?
Yeah, so the intention was that we would work with the city to, as Megan said, you know, kind of an offsite improvement. Because the idea being that if the sidewalk was all on our site and didn't connect to the parking lot, then no one would ever use it. But if people could access the sidewalk directly from that parking lot and then come through the site, it would be more feasible. But again, we're hoping for a.
It's a planning strategy now, right?
Right, it's a, it's a planted, vested strategy.
I think if you're going to do another, like, maybe that side, it's going to progress, you got a bunch of units facing there, you know, like the nice. Of that right line, but. But I always think of it before you go there. Bill has been, I I think the last thing which is very common is the idea of having. Unveil commercial on the Baker Road side. And. I feel like. With the townhouse shape, it's. How much you need it? Uh, I, it's, it's, you're getting towards the end of that stretch right there. And then maybe it's planned to be a big commercial stretch for this.
Okay.
In road, it's. Hey, building first floor residential. Hotel there, I wish. I want to think values that has a detail spies. A gratitude and not a high out of. Now, down to that, two reasons, I'll challenge somebody who's used to the idea of empty retail. We don't have any downtown retailers. We haven't. Jeffers, no, Jeffers is rented. And the reason Jeffers took so long.
Rented, Jeffers is sold.
Jeffers is sold. And the reason it took so long was because they were trying to activate us and.
Well, I knew that.
And as soon as they got real about selling it, they sold it. And, you know, you go, I remember talking to Realtors around ten years ago about the building that I had at Alvin's then, when nobody was in there. He knew who had bought it and they're never going to have this crappy building in a crappy place and now it's sold out. And, you know, the way we have, so, so it's a myth that we have empty buildings. We don't. And the way we drive downtown is through businesses. It's as, it's as much or more of your business as residential. Because residential comes downtown because there's stuff to do there. And we haven't put new units in downtown besides the Jeffers units. That I can, I don't know. And so you can be, you can be against it. You can think this is the right place, residential. I'm not arguing about that. I'm just arguing that, first of all, it's not empty space right now. Downtown's in demand. And second of all. Once, you know, you take a piece downtown, and I don't think it's on the edge. I think it's our downtown. Once you take a piece downtown and you make a residential, you never get that, you never get that opportunity.
Thank you. They have so many, that for a while, before we. I think the words.
I, I, okay. Sure. The existing building there is a reference to a big historic that was built, built in nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen forty, yeah, nineteen forty-seven. Um, how was it historic? Do I look it?
Yeah, I was thinking nineteen.
No, I don't think it has a lot. Important stack. The, uh, I'm still confused about the parking. The, uh, you're gonna get, there's fifteen units and so you get thirty, there, I'm getting thirty spaces in the. Rides and the rest of the spaces are somewhere on the site there. Whether or not you need them, it's nice to have visitors to picture for sure, but where they are, I think, for. Um, bicycle hooks came up, um, and yes, a couple of them on either street. It would run somewhere there or simple on white, but it's that right there. Uh, and one of the things that I, I think is important is. On page five, well, the supplement, it'll hand it out, it'll go along with ten. Items here, that I think are important. The, uh. Setback, the frontage, the, they're all things that. Are contrary to code. And so that comment that this, that the P U D is, is. Jim, as you said, is, is circumventing an awful lot of what you would be required to do. Uh, and could do, I think, if you, if you were building by right. I think those, all of those items on there are important and need to be recognized. So, um.
Very good. I would like to bring up that zoning code again. Um, because you're right, this is a weird, it's this weird little middle ground and. Um, just looking at these form, you know, the form-based code for that district. You were calling that drunk building a duplex. But it's really a two-unit townhouse shape.
But so, but you have to remember.
The form is a townhouse.
The form is a duplex. Because of the way duplexes find new rooms. You have to, it's an onion that, you know it. Uh, but I understand what you're saying. That's one of the reasons the, the comment in both Carlo Orpin's and Stan's review is. Is there a way that you could use that existing home, if it's able to be used? And build adjacent to it, uh, one way or the other. Um, or is it in such a spot that it doesn't lend itself to it? But that's been an asset in the neighborhood. This, we don't, don't even think of it as historic preservation. Think of it as the neighborhood asset that it is and mechanically reused. Um, and per the P U D criteria set up in order to qualify. Um, and, and if you don't think that it can, um, for whatever reasons you decide. And you, there would be a degree to articulate those. That's fine. It, it just provides some feedback for the applicant as well as for standing consultants.
Good. Uh, are you saying that, Jim? Yeah, I'm a little confused about saving this existing building. I just want you to make it clear. Are you saying that we have to give a reason if we're okay with knocking it down?
Then applicant, so remember, you're, the criteria in here is that you're not using historical. Let me make sure I use the proper language. Um, those P U D shall not result in unreasonable negative environmental impact or loss of historic structures.
Sorry.
So this structure does qualify as a historic structure. Doesn't mean that it must be preserved. The applicant needs to demonstrate why it can't be, why they need to take it down, why it can't be utilized. As part of the development. So that if you're, um, able to show, they've demonstrated compliance with that.
Is any pre-existing structure considered historic structure?
No, it's a zero.
So what?
The Department of Interior standards is at least seven hundred years old.
But it's not a hundred years.
It will, nineteen seventy-seven, so that is. Nineteen forty-seven, I'm sorry, I said a hundred fifty years. It's fifteen years is what, is what a building must have as far as age, but that's also not the only criteria. Um, um.
I guess that's fine, but let me ask the follow-up question. That's for the P U D. If they were just redeveloping a lot of right, can they knock it down?
Can.
Okay, thank you. I'm already against the P U D, so it doesn't matter.
Understood.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll say a few things and then we'll go through the list. Um, first of all, I, I guess I. Um. I was on the housing committee as, with Karen and, uh, I, I think, are you were too?
Yeah.
Or you weren't?
I was done.
You were a consultant. So, um, I think one of the assets of this, of the P U D, uh, would be that this, this didn't offer a diversified, uh, housing opportunities, uh, in the city. Um, I think as far as commercial goes, you might consider a little bit of work and, and, uh. As a potential, uh, option to address that. Um, in terms of density in the city, we've been talking about density now for like years. And every time you see a project with density. Uh, we often start looking at, um, our setbacks and our, our suburban standards and, uh. And, and, and pushing density away. I hope that you all find a way, my perspective. To work this through the process and get the density that everybody says they want. But when they see it, they, they push back against it. And I'm not saying that for bad reason, that's, that's my opinion. Um, I, I think the historic is, is not an issue here, uh, from my perspective. I think I was on it, on the planning commission when we talked about having a historic district. And we decided we didn't want one, but we have a lot of old houses that are not particularly historically, uh. Relevant architecture, they're just old. And, uh, I think that's a very distinctive things and we work with, uh, historic structures all the time. And defining them as historic and what that means and what, what's a valued asset and a resource. Is something that's somewhat of a moving target and it's something I hope that, uh, again, we can work that through the process and clarify that, uh, where necessary. Um, the, the fire department, uh, you know, we're seeing a lot of, of multifamilies that are sprinkled out and. And if, if that makes, uh, help with the fire clearances and things, uh, that, that would be helpful. But, but as Michelle said, that, um, working through the fire department's concerns is, I think, doable with the eleven feet. I don't, I don't think there's any way, um, a burning, a fire truck is gonna pull next, whether that driveway is eleven feet or twenty-five feet. Uh, my perspective, I don't see any way a fire truck has been pulling that driveway next to a burning building. And set out there. That's not gonna happen. It's never gonna happen. And, uh, it, it's not a requirement of the code, the building code. Uh, so I think that's a, that's a potential area where you have some, uh, opportunities to, uh, work that out one way or the other. Um, the, uh, the architecture, I think, is fantastic. It's, it's what we all, uh. We all, again, say that we'd like, we'd like, an architect takes the time to get to know the community a little bit, designs, uh, in, in that direction. And here it is, terrific. And, uh. So those are my comments. Um. And then, uh, so I think what we're going to go through this real quick, I know we've addressed a number of these already. And we'll just see if anybody has any other comments, uh. Prototype needs quality, qualities in the P U D designation. I think we talked about that. Uh, Jim just mentioned it. Anybody have anything to add?
I'm just bringing the credit.
Sure.
Um, one question I have is. Are the reasons that you've got two, five, uh, unit buildings and then a three and a two are providing more end units? So that people can get units that have windows? Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm trying to think, how can you keep your fifteen units? Get the access to me on that lot and. It seems to me that having sort of fourth space between these units is part of the problem. And I'm still thinking, but also if I were buying into this, I would want my unit to have windows. We've got to go on.
So, um, quite honestly, for us, the ten unit consideration wasn't first to ninth, um. We were trying to front the building on the street. So that was, we can only fit a two-unit wide building and a three-unit wide building fronting on Forest and Baker. If we made, we've had so many different conceptual iterations of these plans. And at one time we did look at a one much longer unit, but then we had the side of the unit on the street and so, yeah, we'll accommodate her.
Thank you. Uh, I have a B or innovative design elements, um. Innovative design proposal to be in development of the underutilized site and so on, send it to him and we can add.
Well, just like I said, I think, I think your thinking's right. Thinking's imaginative. You're trying to do something imaginative, it's too loud and. Like I said, I don't want this too negative.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I have a C, um, unifying design elements. I think you covered that as well. Uh, long-term protection and preservation, natural resources, talk about that. Historic structure, we talked about that.
What, what are you giving them guidance on that? That's half of us are saying, or not half, but. If I'm, if I'm telling you about the historic.
Oh.
What, you know, some of those things, history and some of these don't, I guess.
Sometimes we're not gonna all get a sink.
Okay, so, okay. So the suggestion that staff and consultant have for is, is. It qualifies as a historic structure because it's been, it's been fifty years old. That doesn't make it a historic structure. Um, but it's been in the neighborhood for seventy-five plus years. And we offer it as it could be considered a historic asset in that neighborhood. Because of it being there that long. You may agree with that or you may not. You may not see that, um, it has any historic value. And that's the feedback that you would need to give the applicant, um, as well as staff, so you know how to address that.
So I think it's important to say to you, how are we supposed to? We have no knowledge about what this has been used for. And I, you know, and I've seen other places where Steph does give some background on the building. We have no background on this building. And I'm not gonna tell the applicant it's historic structure without knowing something about it. And I'm not gonna tell the applicant it's not a historic structure without knowing.
So I would.
And right, and right now, what it looks like, I mean, honestly, it looks, it looks like a thumpy little building. But I don't know, it was the site of like first Hope's master in Dexter's house and they lived there fifty years. I don't know. But you're not giving me anything and I think it's, I think it's unfair for you to, to direct us to make any sort of finding on this. Better, positive, negative, or anything.
I'm not asking you to have any findings today.
It feels that way.
Decision. It's to provide feedback. If there's additional information, you expect the applicant to give because it's their job to demonstrate. Compliance with the most to your satisfaction.
I, I agree with you, Jim, going, all, all the buildings in Dexter are over fifty years old, except the animal that been rebuilt. So this could be a state, uh, meaningless part of the ordinance. We can talk about later, it belongs to you or not. But that's, that's for another meeting. Um, so anybody have anything else to, uh, to add?
Um, if you were to keep it, it would be a cold. And you know, it's, it's above and leave care for, but it's.
It's dated.
It's what?
It's dated.
Not nineteen forty-seven dated.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have the, uh, long-term protection and preservation of natural resources. All of them you checked into.
Yeah, and there you are. There, I don't know if I'm gonna say that, but I was curious about that part.
There's nothing really. That's.
Uh, I, it, it can't change, uh, economy diversity, the use of land. If we have any, I don't know. If I don't know. Uh, I have G, Harmony in public health, safety, welfare, city. I think working within the general structure of the management to meet the best path. Age is kind of redundant to. Yeah, I'm just hoping to develop. Um, oh, I, I, uh, if you should not resolve a unreasonable negative, you cannot impact. And maybe not, well, that's pretty. Um, I have J, Harmony, zoning ordinance, master plan. We talked about that, Jimmy, here. Um, okay, next page, uh. Okay, single ownership. Okay, uh, L is not. Proposed and intent to, uh, write a petition and certain, I mean, the application. Right. Okay, I think, uh, unless, uh, anybody else has anything to add?
Just because I want you to be surprised, our chair is not here today and he feels very strongly about preserving trees on properties. So I don't know if he can or not, but if you come back, he's gonna talk about that. We did talk about bicycle.
I mean, let me add another. One of the, it would be nice to see, it was kind of mentioned here, your, your graphics are. Then we'd be nice to see somewhere, um, how they relate to each. Then we'd be nice to see somewhere, um, how they relate to the A J structure, so that we can compare the base of the building to the A J's structure. So, there's a couple areas that would be very important to uh for us to see that, you can't tell from the fan view. I like the buildings, as I mentioned in Manhattan. But you, the front of the building faces outside, every case outside of the property, what if you drive in your advocacy is the garage doors, but I think. In every case, which is typically, you don't want to do, but you've done a pretty nice job of of letting making them blend in or so that they. So that they fit, but the fact remains, you drive in there. Every completion walk, you're gonna, you drive towards pretty much, and what you do about it, as I was saying, don't go bad, but you do fit.
Thank you, Jim.
How do you mean, I had a similar thought before you walked in on that walkway, there is that one that's gonna be right, you have to like walk across the. Entrance to that one garage, and that's like. Hey, from town boy.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, well, uh, I think you've heard the planning commissions habits such as this and uh. Give that some thought and uh. Uh, overall, thank you very much, and it looks like a very exciting project, you know, important process.
Thank you everyone.
Well, I have a C and I have a D, uh, point twenty-four, moving calendar. Oh, sorry, yes. Yeah, right over, um, yeah, tax amendment, uh, three point eleven.
Um, so this just stem from the last site plan amendment that Bill looked at with the champion gymnastics, uh, what I like for the city council. Uh, they just pointed out that in the order to. Uh, interpret it as strict as possible, uh, the fence, I think it be. Would only be applicable for specifically industrial uses, where I think. Uh, the consensus with the intent was for it to be approved uses in that district, not specifically industrial. Says, uh, so they just asked to have planning condition issue that I'm going to just verify that. Uh, so it is having to set up public, I mean, for your game, right?
Need a vote, alright. We uh, I mentioned local vote, so, so I'll be hearing. Someone. Laura, Karen, support. Or Karen?
Party?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Upper?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yeah.
Roberts?
Yeah.
Phillips?
Yeah. Good, um, next one is review of fires, I have a C.
So I happen to sit on the public facility, same thing, I mean. Uh, with law, uh. I'm driving that law, methodology. Do some of their own, Jan Schloss and Sonala LA. Um, well, city manager, W and et cetera. Um, what, what, um, the architect and community need is some feedback removed on these eight different design assets. Um, it would be helpful if you know that the way the architect is designing, you'll see new build of the fire station. It is uh, public access would be on Alpine Street. And. Main Street, although it's a front, it is, is really not like a side. Um, which is why it kind of looks like backend right now, I mean, it's front, um. We have given some feedback to the architect to let him know that it's, it's nice that you want to do in front, you know, in front of the building, not outside. But the front of the building facing main street, even if it's not going to be the public entrance, can't look like backend. Or just a plain old side yard. So you'd see two black doors and then another door, um, facing main, those would be. Um, relocated around to the sides and, um, there'd probably be some more windows. So that it doesn't look so much like a, uh, uh, the backend, but what we really need from you is. What you, what your feedback is on the overall architectural style. As it pertains mostly to the roof lines, if you look at option one from main street, there's, there's a cornice. You should have number one, one, two, three, four, et cetera. Number one has a cornice. Um. And you can see it both on the main street side and the Alpine side, but you don't really have any parapet. Option two shows a parapet with some, um, I'm helping with the wording or child, and you've got these sort of canopies that hang on.
Yeah, it's like a little.
Yeah, um. Two is similar, um, but there's a change in like breadth color and, um. That's basically the biggest change. Uh. From three to four, it just is, is different variations of the breadth. You don't get into a style change until you get to either, um, option six. And you start to see a little bit more of where that parapet and signage coming to play, the windows are really the same. Uh, especially on that. What looks like the second floor of the main street is actually the first floor on Alpine Street, um. I just need some feedback from you on, is there one that we love more than you?
I like six best. I think it's interesting that six had the most signage on the front, if no signage on the side.
Yeah.
There should be signage on both sides of the building. I think overall, I mean, I know what I explained was to try and pick mine, it's pretty uninspiring at the time.
That's what. Yeah, I I agree with Jim, I, well, well, so, what was the budget established, you know, I think together?
Uh, over a year ago. It's a nine point, the one you know, the dollar budget, yeah, but.
And it's, you know, what we went to board approved and knowing that we set aside, which we did. And I do want to clarify, it's not just me sitting here saying, hey, guys, I'll just turn the budget, it's just something I. Think we need to be aware of at every step of this project, just because of the huge. Expense to the taxpayers and with that said, um, council is going to start discussing other potential, um. Revenue sources to help, um, for looking for, supplement. The money from the the voters and that we set aside, so it's not, I'm not saying, you know, this is what we need to do to solve that problem, it's just.
It's a completely uninspiring, like, we should be building a building, we're not gonna build it on a fire station for fifty years, like, or a hundred years. Like, we should be building a building that adds to downtown Dexter, if for all this, you know, hullabaloo, we decide to keep it there. We should be building a building that is like a whole place, at least look wise for downtown Dexter. This is like, this could be. In Fresno, California, or anyplace, this could be, this is like cookie cutter, any suburbia fire station and. And I mean, I know that they're trying to make this side of the street side, like the backside, but boy, that sure shows, because it looks like a back of the building. I mean, it looks like a back of building, it's terrible.
Okay, I would like to just add to what Jim's saying, I I totally agree, um, for one thing, it's a myth that ugly buildings inexpensive. That that is not true at all, the the, there's, you know, the area is full of horrible buildings that were very expensive and this has to do with. With the ability of the architect on some level, um, and, and, and a number of other items and, and. And this all goes back further to, to when, when somebody selects an architect. And they interview them and they look at their history and the work that they've done in the past and they have to be able to evaluate their talent level. Because architects tend to design the best thing they can, given the partners that they're working with. And, 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 and this region is full of horrible examples of that, where, um, they did the best they could and the best they could just was terrible. And I, and I hate to think that this is an example of that, but it may be, and that maybe goes back to the selection committee, whoever made this decision. Um, to hire this firm, um, did not look carefully at his, his ability and his skill level, he might be inexpensive. And he might be somebody's buddy, and he might be a whole other things, but when it comes to actually having the talent to design a project that fits in Dexter that is a building we can be proud of. Because as Jim said, we're, we're, this is it, we've been talking about this for twenty years. And then this comes out and this looks like a, a, a bad, a bad industrial building, it's the industrial part. And, and it was maybe pre-engineered or something, this, this is, this is terrible, this is a C-level, D-level student project. And, and that's nobody's fault here, you guys in the committee didn't design it, he did. So I, I would suggest that the next step the committee might consider is what is the path to having a. Of, you know, coming up with a design that's not embarrassing to the city. And, and, and again, it is not about the cost, that's, that's a complete myth, you have to create an envelope, you have a program, you have to feed an envelope out of something, this is not an inexpensive envelope. At a brick and concrete block building like this is what it is, it, it's, it's not a cheap building. And this is just a composition, when you met, somebody mentioned grid lines, that is just pathetic. What a job.
I just want to say that I, I mean, I was raised by, so I understand that. You know, this is not a cheap building necessarily, and I, so when I'm saying these comments, that I'm saying is me and not the rest of council. I'm not oblivious to that fact, I'm just, you know, trying to give us a round, well-rounded. And I, I'm not gonna tell you what I did for this, you know, I just looked at these today doing the same as you, so, and I'm not on that committee, so.
Well, and then the other thing is the timeframe and saying, we can't have a decent building because we're in a hurry. So if, if, if we have to craft something that actually is gonna look decent, well, well, we don't have time for that, we, we have to, we have to do something quick. And we gotta get it in the ground, uh, because if we don't, something's gonna happen. And, and that's again, that's another mistake and a fallacy, the, the, the focus on this project is not about. Um, how fast and how cheap it is, it's about what is a quality building for our fire department to be able to operate in for many years. Is gonna get them what they need and it's gonna be a, a, a building, just like what we talked about with this applicant, that's gonna fit into the city of Dexter for a hundred years. And, and, and we can't put a plaque on the side of this thing and say, sorry, it looks like this, but we, it was really cheap and we did really fast and, 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 uh, you know, sorry. That's all we have, and, uh, I, I, that's, that's what I'm saying in matter, that, anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I will, I will concur, if someone, anyone from the public were to look at these. They would not be able to differentiate one from the other, if I let them first take a fair amount of examination, directly see what's the different types. But from them, and, and so. What I would have expected with options is true options, they, you know. Someone mentioned the roof line, left that all out first of all, um, and, and, and doing more with the, with the portion of the building that projects out the boards. Um, uh, main street, rather than a bland brick wall with a few windows and a couple of doors, things like that would have been the options that I would have expected, you know, to. Come back with that, I am curious about the picking table, which is there and all of them, but, um. Yeah, I, I. This is not something that the city of Dexter. Will, will be proud of when it gets built, it would be, there's the heart there.
Thank you, Jim.
I agree, I, at first I thought, well, I don't like number one, that's still on, two, you have to figure out the difference, and it just kept going, it was like a puzzle. Um, and it's, it's an ugly design, um. It really has, has no charm, I, the one that's there now is far more charming than this, I mean, I realize it doesn't have functionality that's necessary, but. Um, but, I mean, it's, it, it's such a nice juxtaposition with, like, applicants generally spend a lot of time trying to think, well, what's gonna fit Dexter, what's gonna fit Dexter? And a lot of, you know, effort into that, and. I, I just, I don't want a bad architect, having lots of rebellion experience, not that long ago, they're not all smart or good, they're just not, I, you know, I really. I think, but that's so cool, they can do all this cool stuff, the Sony, they can, that's cool stuff, and this is, I, it looks like.
The next generation is there right now. Is, is the, is the road down to the park, park will still be there?
The, on the far side, but yeah, that's still there, and there, I did not provide a layout, um. The, for you of the interior, because that's not, that's not something we do on the zoning portion, but it, it does. In a, in some ways dictate how the footprint is, um. That's what I was saying about five base at main street with two underneath, um, there's also vertical integration in the back. That they're looking at for access into the car and public restrooms, um, right there at that level. As opposed to having to go all the way up the stairs or using an elevator. Um, to access them up at the fire department, so.
The, the, the hills are all programming things that are important and certainly, uh, that's part of the design, but this is not. The result of the program, this is the result of somebody, uh, who has a certain field of all of this.
Okay, um, let me ask you this, without, I, I can't, yeah, I would never ask you to tell me what would be the good design. Let me ask this about materials, do you expect all brick and stone or a combination of brick and black? Or are you looking? Are you looking for, are you working with, um. So you said, uh, uh, a combination of materials, uh, all types of materials, size of stone.
Yeah, that, that, that just plays into the design, so it's, it's a, so the way to look at that is, it's a, it's a building designed to last a long time. And when you, when you think of that, you're, you're, and it's an institutional building. And so you, we're expecting there are gonna be relatively buildings that. Exhibit a, 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 a feeling and a character of permanence, so that's gonna be brick or stone. And some big display frame or something like that, that's typically what we're gonna see, we're not gonna see biociding in T one eleven and, and Hardingmore.
Okay, I think there's a lot of materials that could work, the problem is, it's not, the problem's not materials, and, and, I mean. You, it's kind of funny that you asked us to pick among these, because there's no choice among these, like, like, I would have been embarrassed if our architect to give this as like choosing among. Like, like, my kid jokes that every Steve Brower building looks like that, and then if we give Stephen on time, all of Dexter will just look like that. Like, this is like a bad Steve Brower building, it's not even like, it's not even a good Steve Brower building.
Okay. Do we have any authority in this, or do you just write it again? That's how we're feeling. I'm sorry? Do we have any, well, we don't have to store them anymore, but we have more than just saying we don't like it.
We carry it away.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, so. Yes. Your, your opinion does hurt us. Um. They are still. Council, this whole process is still planning that this new building goes through the process, unlike this one. Which isn't going to go through the regular process, council, they, that we all know that made that decision. Um.
When you say this one, you mean the temporary?
Yes.
Yeah. We're a little too vocal.
Could, could I ask everybody to plan, if you should raise your hands, cause it's getting a little.
Yeah.
So Kyle's been trying to say something.
Uh, so, um. So this was the one that's gonna go off on. Up, uh. And I think there's a lot, I'm not saying it's the right one, but there's certainly a lot more charm to something like that. There, there's no reason you can't, okay, you got a picture, you got the, it through, kind of the. You have kind of this. You know, the thing that comes out to me, and. Just to speak specifically, look at this. You know, it has a odd roof shape, that kind of surprises me often, then you've got this stone feature here, which is. There's a heart, it's like this stone thing at the end right now, but it, it's like, get rid of that thing, I just, it's doubling down on kind of a bad part of the building.
It depends on whether that has to be the host tower or not.
What that even just, yes, I mean, so with the roof to pitch, rather than that thing to. You know, I think that, that maybe pitching that roof there and. It, it needs some more.
I think. The way the architect has explained it is, it, it, it's designed to be reflective of the. Uh, flat roof buildings throughout the downtown.
But yours, but it's low and we're already gonna have the big building over here, so like, I think some roof walls might actually. I think it could help, you know, it's already, you're, you're lower than the town building, we're gonna be lower than this thing, you know, I think. I'm not supposed to pitch roof down there, and especially as opposed to that kind of a. I guess it is.
So then, you don't like this, you don't, is it, is there consensus that you don't like slanted roof?
I don't think there's, sounds, we don't like anything about it, it's a play.
You got a high lasters here, you got windows above each thing, you got a nice cornice and it sprays off.
You're kind of being way too generous, the, the, this.
Okay, I've got it.
How did I get? There's another question.
Kyle, your contrast with the old project, that's a great example, like, that's, that's.
What was that?
Kyle's contrast with what was planned across from the old Greek to this.
Look at that.
That, that just shows why this is so bad. Like, if I didn't know it was between this and that, I said.
Well, that's been the same archetype, right?
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Same person?
The same boat, yes.
Same person, that's hard to go.
Okay.
Well, he put his heart into this one.
Is the, uh, the sheriff's not gonna be in this building?
So. The sheriff has indicated that, um, they don't need to be in the sheriff, or in the fire department building. And they actually would prefer to operate out of city hall. Um, both temporarily or permanently. But, um, I don't know that everyone on council is in agreement with that.
And they, tell me if I'm wrong here, but as I just said, the sheriff's department is not gonna put up a dime. For the facilities here in Dexter, correct?
Correct. Dexter, we have to fund everything as far as the fire station and provide the police. Um, facility. Part of the reason things become very difficult when it's fire and police. It's because this site is a challenging site. And. It comes down to trying to put ten pounds of wood in a five pound people bag. So you can't accommodate all the needs of the fire department and the needs of the sheriff. And parking is one of the biggest ones for the sheriff. On this building together, it becomes. It, it's.
Yeah, it, it, it's never been a real sheriff's department anyway, there's really not. Yeah, it's a substation with, with some people and.
And that would be the same thing, but you're.
Right, yeah. It would be much better if they were in a, a location where they had space, they had a couple of holding cells or something like that, whatever they needed and, and, uh.
Well, they have the, I don't know where they have holding cells, but that's not really here in Dexter.
Oh, it's not.
We had that building in the middle of Park. Twenty five, thirty years ago. Right in, in I N State. We're in the middle of Parks Lawn.
Okay.
There were two houses that used to be, they're, they're.
Okay, well, well, thank everybody.
I, I appreciate your feedback. Okay, you wanna go on to the last?
Yeah, I have the, uh, the meeting calendar.
Oh, yeah, uh, meeting calendar, that's right, um. Meeting calendar, do those dates look good for y'all? Um. Wednesday, the thirty, we learn as opposed to Tuesday. Um, Monday's a holiday or, or a closed Monday, the thirty first is on Sunday or something close Tuesday as well. So that's what your, your meeting date on Wednesday. Um, we don't have the same problem with July four, July fourth is on Thursday this year, so your meeting will be Monday. Um.
If you don't have to do business, January third.
Yeah, and hold the table, it's math, not your.
I was gone, that whole week.
But the rest of it looks good for you.
Yep.
September third is a Tuesday after Labor Day. And everything else just wasn't with us.
I actually, I checked everything, but I just give somebody what I'm checking, like, I'm sure I'm good with everything, usually, there'll be one or two.
Okay, then I just need a motion. And a second and then.
Motion.
Motion for the.
Uh, move, um, except for calendar.
I'll put it on.
Eric, second, yes. Uh, all favor, I, I. Vote. Motion here.
One other thing I could.
Check.
That's a inter-prolonging meeting. What? One of the, the last meeting, I was one of the citizens and, um. As a citizen, I couldn't address. Um, planning commission except the, it's a, the, the beginning or end. I really wanted to make a point. When the opponent people were here and was not able to. And I would, I would love it if there was a secondness of, for the chair. To recognize, I mean, you may be able, whomever. Um, to, to hear their point, my point was a port law, that there's a walkway that could be connected, I don't know if you passed that on.
Actually, it was put in the last council document with the public comments.
At the north end there, the bubble walk on it, including door walk without crossing, hardly need water and that. That'll be part of the plan and that's what I wanted to express and then I didn't get it.
So, no, because it. Cause then you had tried to make comment after. The first public comment and the second public comment, I'm trying to remember what happened.
We didn't hear all the sound wasn't working.
Yeah, my computer began. I guess a point, there, there were.
I can agree with you, but that's a state, uh, that's a legislative thing, right?
What?
Who could participate in public meetings and remotely, I think if you're a veteran.
I'm a veteran.
He, he, no, he didn't want to, he wasn't commenting as a commissioner, which is fine. He wanted to be able to make a comment, the sound wasn't working and.
So, I, I thought he could participate remotely if he's a veteran.
No.
So I'm completely opposed to this. And we, we cannot start letting a follower. Except during public comment, start, start commenting, because then we have to allow it for everyone.
Wow, if it were a, a vote on the board or the chairman specifically, the.
You know, it's the middle, in the middle of the discussion on a project, you can't be pulling another vote and, and not only that, but. All of our votes have to have like a basis, why would we allow one member to public comment but later to not allow another member, it would discriminate.
Well.
Yeah, it's still very flawed.
Yeah, it might be, but you, you gotta recognize, maybe, you know, so it shouldn't be this, but that.
But you have the ability though to, to talk offline too, to be in picture for them.
I would argue it's more important not to recognize you, cause a board member shouldn't get about the free.
Okay, I hear you, but at one point, I really wanted to get a draw, and I thought it was important, I wanted to go for it, and I totally did, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll get into the chair. You know, like, okay.
I am ten, uh, meet with us. On January third.
It's, at this point, it's just the public hearing and the discussion.
Okay, and citizens wishing that.
Any hands online that anyone would like to speak?
No hands.
Seeing none, well, close item, nothing and, uh, German, motion to adjourn.
The chair.
For, for Kyle, all favor.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, I've got it.
Okay, I've been here.